Good evening. Today is Monday, July the 25th, 2022, and I now call the Winton Woods City School Board of Education meeting to order. Please rise with me and do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mr. Seymour, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Smith. Present.
Mr. Smith. Mr. Burge.
Present.
Ms. Bryant.
Present.
Dr. Johnson.
Present. The next item on the agenda is a recess, and since we just got started, we're going to forego the recess, and we're going to go straight to public comments. And I did not receive any papers for public comments, but what I would like to do at this time is move Agenda Item 8.01, Reports of the Superintendent and School Reports, up to this point, and we will not do the 8.02, just 8.01 for that sake. So, Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President and Board. You know, we've been talking about SHP for a while, and that we have a unique experience with them, not just because Jeff Parker was one of the chief architects, but because they're doing something really different at Winton Woods than they've ever done at another school. They're doing surveys, trying to find out, do we really like the product? How do we use the product? And I think this can go really, really big. We've been able to participate in this workshop or this PD called Ed Spaces. I think we've done it a couple of times. This is one of the things that they would probably look for, because it's never happened before. Usually, they build a building, the people enjoy it, you go on about your business. But now, they're asking for real, relevant information. How does it fit your student body, and how does it fit your teacher population? So, this is one survey of many. There will be another survey that Mr. Parker and his team will actually push through. And the other part is Ms. Jackson and myself and Mr. Parker worked on it to kind of refine it, but now it's his work, and so he's going to let you see how people feel about the space.
Very good. Thank you.
Well, good evening, Boards. Good to be in front of you. Hello.
Hi.
And, yeah, as Mr. Smith mentioned, we have -- it was important that we really kind of dig into your new buildings and see how they're working. You all have -- are in kind of uncharted territory with the way your buildings are organized and the way they're outfitted, and you chose to do some things that we hadn't seen done before with the breadth of kind of the variety of learning spaces that you have here, the way they're being used. And we wanted to see, okay, how are we doing? Are the buildings functioning the way we anticipated? Are there things that we need to bolster or support? Are there things that, as designers, that we just shouldn't do? Right? So, you know, they call it the practice of architecture, and it is certainly that. So, we issued a survey at the end of this past school year, and it went out to all of the teachers across the district and all of the 7th through 12th grade students. I will say that it was, I think, the last week of the school year, so we didn't have the 12th grade students' response like we would have hoped. But you'll see, we did get a significant response from the kids.
Yeah, the seniors were, "We'll go to college, and then we'll tell you how it felt."
That's right. That's right. We'll tell you how much better our school was in your college.
Your place is in college, absolutely, sir.
That's right. So anyhow, that was in May of 2022. I want to just take a moment and remind you of kind of the Forbes themes that helped shape these schools. These -- you've probably heard these before. This idea of inside and outside, being able to learn inside and outside, the idea of show and tell, so presenting my work, telling others about my learning, and also making the learning a little more visible, so that you can see what's going on in other classes, right? We wanted this idea of eat and learn, where the eating and dining is really integrated within the learning spaces, so that we can maximize that space throughout the school day. And finally, this idea of community and culture, really welcoming the community in, as well as kind of helping the staff and students really build a culture, a collegial culture here of learning, around learning. Okay? So, those may sound familiar to you. And with the teachers, we had 141 responses, which we thought was really good. You can see here, 38% were at the high school. The others, let's see, the light blue was 9% at the 7th and 8th grade, and the remainder were here at South Campus. Okay? So, pretty evenly distributed, not, you know, nothing alarming there, nothing surprising. So, we, as I mentioned, we created a suite of rooms in each small learning community. So, each small learning community has a room like this that we call a double classroom or a seminar room. They have two smaller classrooms that are adjoining to each other. They have the collaborative zone, and they also have the project lab. And the intent was to provide each small learning community with a Swiss Army knife of spaces, if you will. So, depending on what the instructional needs were for any given day, teachers could move around and use the different spaces best suited to maybe collaboration one day, maybe a project, maybe a messy project another day. So, the intent would be that teachers could move around and collaborate and say, okay, I'm going to need -- we're going to make a mess this day, I need to be in the project lab. So, what we learned was that about half of the teachers are using the same room every day. And as, once we get to the end, I'll give you some reasons why we think we're seeing the results that we have. It's not a real surprise. At the South Campus, you can see two-thirds are really staying put. North Campus, 7th and 8th grade, a quarter of them are using different spaces. And, let's see, I'm sorry, three-quarters of them are using different spaces, and two-thirds are using different spaces at the high school. So, at the high school, not surprisingly, at North Campus, we're seeing things work a little more like we would expect. We also wanted to find out, where are we storing instructional materials? You might recall that we created the teacher cowork spaces, and integrated into those rooms, we have what we call high-density storage. So, all that classroom storage could now be stored in those locations. So, what we're seeing is that, so the orange is, I store most of my stuff in a classroom. The blue and the gray is, I keep it at where I keep it at my desk, either in the cowork or I keep it in the cowork storage room. So, what we're seeing, and again, no surprise, at South Campus, we're seeing a lot of storage in the classrooms. At North Campus, we're seeing the inverse of that. Okay? So, the teachers are really beginning to take advantage of those cowork spaces. How well do the cowork spaces support work? On the left is, how well do they support individual work? Okay? The bright blue and the green are very well and well. So, we feel like those are pretty well received. The yellow is neutral. So, if you, you know, about, let's see, three-quarters of that pie is neutral or above. If we look, you know, the other question is, how well do those spaces support collaboration? And even a greater percentage are feeling positive about those spaces supporting collaboration. I know at the middle, at the junior high school, those spaces are getting a lot of use from the teams there, as well as at the high school. But I feel like at the middle school, they've really taken ownership of them, and there's some special things happening in there. We wanted to ask about the distributed dining. And, you know, the idea behind distributed dining was that we would use that space and put it near the classroom, so that the kids could use that outside of lunch hours. Okay? And, you know, these are teacher responses, and 73% say that we really don't use the distributed dining for learning, for instruction. Of course, higher at the South Campus, lower at the North Campus. And we also asked the same question about the learning stair. Okay? Those are the -- everyone knows what the learning stairs are, they're pretty obvious now. But a similar result, 73% say they don't use the learning stair. And I, we, well, I will get to the end, and I'll offer some anecdotal insight into these numbers. It's not as skewed as what this might paint. I talked earlier about the breadth of spaces that we created here, you know, the collaborative spaces, the seminar classrooms, the adjoining classrooms. So, our hope was that those would create instructional benefits, right? So that teachers could do things that they couldn't do before. And we, so we asked the question, are you using these spaces to do new things? And you can see that, well, typically, well, just over half said, you know, we're really not seeing the benefit from them yet. And we'll get to why we think that's happening. So, we also polled the students. We got almost 200 responses, which we felt really good about. You know, a pretty good spread, a little lean on the junior high side, but that's okay. They're a little slow, anyway. And so, this is a really good and interesting question. This question was essentially, where do you like to learn the most? In these new buildings, where are you most comfortable? And at the, you can see, 35% of our 9th through 12th graders said that they really liked the collaborative areas. But then also, the inverse is true also. So, 34% really don't like the collaborative areas. So, it kind of speaks to the fact that we are all individuals, and we like to be where we like to be. Exactly. Yeah. So, I think what this does is it, you know, with this spectrum of spaces, it allows everyone to find a comfortable place. All right? We asked about lockers, because we had a lot of conversation early on about, you know, do we want to invest in the lockers or not? You can see that most of the kids don't use a locker. You know, it's, let's see, almost 60% at the 7th and 8th grade, and just over 80% at the high school side. So, that's a lot of kids not using a locker. So, they're just carrying their things around, right? And we see that really across the industry. I mean, that's just kind of the way things are right now. If you use a locker, how often do you go to your locker? Only 8% of the kids of that 20% who are using a locker, only 8% are going between bells. Most of them go either just in the morning, or maybe in the morning in the afternoon. This was kind of a more qualitative question. How do you like the distributed dining areas? And you can see that, you know, most of the kids really enjoy the distributed dining function. I think it gives a level of autonomy and agency. It lets you find a spot that's comfortable for you, a spot that you can kind of be, and it's less of an industrial effort. But we're also seeing that, so we wanted to know, we wanted to ask the students, are your teachers using these spaces? And, you know, we saw kind of varied responses, but generally not. And I think there are different reasons for that that we'll get into here in a minute. Similar for the learning stairs. It seems that, once you're in class, you tend to stay in the class and not a lot of activity going out. All right. So, from a, as we, so I presented this information to Mr. Smith, who asked me to present it then to his principal team. So, we met with all the principals, and we got a lot of good insight from them. I think the, you know, the primary thing, and Mr. Smith helped me, was that, you know, we opened these buildings in the midst of a pandemic, right? Which forced us to do things a little differently than we had intended to do. So, teachers were placed in a room, they stayed in a room, and, you know, those are old habits that we were kind of reinforcing instead of breaking. So, now, it's that time where we need to begin to kind of retune people's expectations of what my classroom means, right?
And we started, and we started the year with masks on. And so, coming out of the mask situation, there were teachers that were still trying to protect that space and not let kids be as free to roam the buildings in a very positive way than they ordinarily would have been.
Yeah.
So, we understood it. And so, when you were, when you were bringing up the survey, the principals identified it immediately. It's like, we started using more space as we became more comfortable with the COVID mandates and restrictions.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Yeah. Let's see, the other thing is that, I mentioned, the, we didn't have many seniors respond to this, to these questions. And what we're hearing anecdotally from Mr. Martin is that, you know, there's, the seniors have a lot more autonomy in the building with where they are and when they are, right? So, they were getting a lot more use out of those kind of freer spaces than these numbers would indicate. So, I think, you know, from my perspective, you know, this begins to paint a picture that says, we've got, we've got the spaces in the, we have the appropriate spaces. We need to kind of push back on those pandemic kind of tendencies and really begin to get out. And, you know, Mr. Martin, he said that, you know, sometimes on, when he's scheduling classes, where they are during the school day, some classes will just, he'll just say, "Be creative, find a place to do it," which, you know, it's beautiful that the building allows for that kind of flexibility. So, I think we are in a good place. I feel like we, we, as a team, really understand what we're up against, and I feel like the pieces are in place to really begin to drive change. So, we're excited about it.
Yeah, the other, yeah, the other part is, one of the principals suggested that Mr. Parker recreat the survey, but put other variables in it. I don't want to. I want it to be the same identical ones, because it can skew the data. If you start putting different things in, they answer it different. So, I would like to see it be the same information, and then we can actually track it better to see what's the real historical relevance of where we were until where we are now. And I think it would make more sense to us. Otherwise, we'll keep changing it, and we won't get a true definition of what we're looking for.
Yeah. Yeah. I think the other, the other reality here at South Campus is that you've got elementary kids, right? You have elementary teachers. And, you know, it's, it is, I think, one of the challenges for Winton Woods is figuring out, how do we make PBL really work for elementary kids? And as far as I know, you guys are the first to really bite that off and take on that challenge. So, you know, I was trying to explain to my wife, who is an elementary teacher also, you know, how PBL could work, and she's just struggled to wrap her head around it, as I think any elementary teacher would. So, I think there's probably some, maybe some PD, maybe some teamwork that needs to happen to really begin to equip folks. And in talking with Tamara, that, you know, that work is already in place or starting to happen. So, I think we're getting there.
Yeah, but I think the other, the other issue is, teachers traditionally believe that they have to be the vessel of all the information, and with the didactic seminars or whatever they produce, they have to be the lecturer, and they don't realize the kids can be the researcher and the lecturer at the same time, which kind of changes the whole level of confidence for our kids.
Right.
So, they, when you have test mandates, it's very difficult to talk about projects, because people are saying, "I have to get this done so the kids can do well on this assessment," but they don't realize they can take, they can get further if the kids are really involved.
Right. Right.
And that's the, and that's the chances, and that, those are the chances that we took. Those are the risks that we took. But when we realized the kids are really embracing it and really spreading the knowledge, it was very beneficial.
Yeah. Yeah. I think the other, the other interesting thing that this small learning community structure allows for is, instead of a teacher being, you know, a teacher having his or her 25 kids, you know, now we, now all six of us have our 150 kids, right? So, it kind of changes the attitude. It, it's a much kind of broader focus, a more holistic picture of what's happening. So, I feel like we've got, we've got kind of the groundwork laid, and I think everything is ready to go. If we can kind of shake off the vestiges of these pandemics, of this pandemic, hopefully we can get on with it. But I appreciate the opportunity to do some research here. And as I said when I began, you know, you guys are doing some really amazing things here at Winton Woods, and we want to be a part, and we want to do everything we can to really make that happen. But also, you know, as we design other buildings, we want to be able to share the good things that you all are doing with folks across the country and really take advantage of it. So, any other questions?
Well, I appreciate SHP taking the challenge to do the survey, to want to know, because sometimes you don't want to know. And I'm not saying you guys.
Sure.
But when you start asking those questions, and they don't seem to be favorable, you're like, "Why did I do this survey?"
Right.
But I appreciate your courageous effort.
Well, thank you. Thank you. No, please.
I was going to say, I appreciate. It's been very helpful, because as board members and as community, we want to see how it operates in our, in our district. And I did wonder, on the elementary age, is it hard of certain age children, where you just can't let everyone just wander off? Is that the harder part for the younger?
Not being an educator, I don't know.
Well, with my children, I'm afraid they would run off anyways.
Yeah. I think that's, that's part of the paradigm shift, where instead of a teacher feeling like he or she has to kind of keep her arms around these 25, she needs to realize that she's got, you know, half a dozen other partners in this who are helping him or her. So, it's, I think it, you know, that's why we put coworking spaces in each of these small learning communities, so we can really build that teamwork and that collegial atmosphere and that interdependence, you know, so that I know that if I've got a runner, that Mr. Jones is going to grab him and send him back, right? So, there's, I feel like that's part of it.
You're talking about the teacher or the kid?
Either one.
Yeah.
You know, the question that I had, Mr. Parker, is, you talked about the lockers and how they were not being used.
Right.
But traditionally, at least elementary school, they are used to using cubbies. So, I was surprised to see such a high volume of elementary school kids not using a locker.
So, those were junior high?
Oh, okay.
Right.
Okay, because that makes sense then, because they'll, and then with most of, a lot of the books being eBooks, then they have fewer books to carry.
Right.
So, the few things that they have in their backpack, it's fine. Okay, I was, I thought I had seen that it was like the 1 through 6, and I'm like, "Where are these kids putting their stuff there?"
Well, the other thing, Doc, is you got to look at the volume of the distance of the building. This is a new building I don't know much about. So, I don't have time to stop at these lockers.
Yeah.
I know what my schedule is, and so, to dial it, to take time to try to get to it, I'm trying to get to the class.
Well, and the time in between classes, too. They don't have that much time.
Yes. I may use that locker.
If I was any age, when my son was in school, I don't think he ever used his locker.
Yeah.
And that's only, that's in 2015, so I think he just carried everything in his backpack a lot.
And kids don't wear coats, by the way. Right. Right.
They wear hoodies, even in the wintertime.
Yeah.
So, it is kind of different on that. And that's good. And then, did the principals offer some ideas on what they think they could make it better? Did they share some thoughts?
They did. And actually, I'm meeting tomorrow afternoon with the South Campus principals to talk about, you know, some of the challenges that they're seeing. And, you know, we have, I think, two of the three are new building administrators who weren't here during the design process. So, you know, unlike a new car, this building doesn't have an owner's manual. So, there are things that this building can do that you might not be aware of if you weren't, you know, part of the design process. So, that's, hopefully tomorrow will be beneficial to them in that regard, too.
And did they say why they weren't using the learning stairs, or they just didn't move once they got in a place?
Well, I think it's, I think it's that, you know, we are all creatures of habit, right? We figure out a way that works for us, and we stick with that. I think also, living in a pandemic, it only reinforced that. So, I think that when you're teaching, I think it's easier just to stay put, or it feels easier to stay put, right? But those learning stairs are all about show and tell, right? They're all about presenting my work and sharing what I've learned, right? So, not that that isn't happening, but it's happening in a space that isn't doing it really well.
Well, and one of the challenges could be getting everyone from point A to point B within a reasonable amount of time without eating up all your instruction time.
Yeah. But, you know, from here to the learning stair is how far? And, you know, with littles, that's different. I get that. But with the bigger kids, I mean, you can be there in 45 seconds and get on with it.
Yeah. And in the beginning, the kids were reluctant to use the courtyard. They were like, "Can we really go out here and have fun, or, you know, is it okay?" And so, as the year progressed, then it became a more natural flow.
Yeah.
I want to say thank you so much for your presentation. And as a parent, a grandparent, I'm thinking of my three-year-old grandson, who needs the space and likes to run, and how this space gives educators an opportunity to explore education from a different focus. It isn't just the classroom. Our students now are not the same students they were 30 years ago. And just thinking about how restrictive we used to be, you had to walk in the line, you couldn't speak, you couldn't wave, you just looked. You know, we didn't do a service, because that's all we knew. So, to have a building that's open and inviting, and you can go outside, imagine that, and explore the environment to learn, is phenomenal. So, thank you for this data. I'm looking forward to see what happens over the next couple of years, and hopefully educators can, it's okay to leave your classroom, so, as we grow.
Yeah. The only thing that I, that is a concern of mine is that if, if we can't figure out how to use, you know, how to get teachers out of their rooms and into other rooms, this building is not designed to work like my elementary school, like Cameron Park, right? So, you know, it will never function the way they're using it today. It'll never function well that way. So, we've got to really begin to break those paradigms down. But I feel like we're on the frontier of getting that done.
Good point.
Thank you.
Yeah. Mr. Smith, I have some slides of the preschool, if I could update the board with that as well.
You'll be good. You're taking over one of my facilities updates, so I'm happy about it.
Very good. Very good. All right.
I didn't either, so this is perfect.
Yes. So, we've been working on the transition of the old intermediate school, or of my middle school, into the new early childhood campus. And I want to just share a few brief slides with you about that. So, this is the campus in aerial view. That should all look familiar, Waycross Road and Ken Road. The, what we're looking to do is, as we think about this building and bringing little kids to this school, the school is 73,000 square feet. So, it's a bigger building, right? But it's, that being said, it's important that we, that we get the kids as close to the building as we can, right? We can't drop them off on the end and have them filter down through it. So, one thing that we're trying to do is create a circulation loop around the building, so we can drop off children as close to their classrooms as possible. All right? So, now, the light blue loop is a parent loop, and they'll be dropping off kind of on the north side of the building and entering at those arrows. The green, and so they will enter off of Waycross, and then they will exit out onto Waycross, down across from Kingdom Family Dentistry.
With a new exit.
With a new exit there, okay? The green will enter across from the dentist, and then they will kind of sweep up the backside and around the west end, again, dropping off at four points around the perimeter of the building. And let's see, we're actually adding, if you're familiar with where the playground is, we're adding an entry point at that corner. I don't think my, oh, it will work. Right here, we're adding an entry point here, just to supplement that. The dark blue is staff entry and exit and parking, and the orange is central office. So, this block down here, what historically has been called the new wing, which, who knows how old it was? I was in 6th grade there. So, the new wing is going to be the central office. We're going to have a new central office parking lot, which will enter and exit right off of Waycross. which will enter and exit right off of Waycross Road at this point. So really, there isn't, we're trying to minimize the kind of overlap of central office traffic and preschool building traffic, okay? Any questions on the site plan here? Great. This is the floor plan of the building. Let's see, just to kind of orient us, the gymnasium is right here and the cafeteria and stage. The main entrance is here, okay? Let's see, and I'll just bring us in the front door. We're going to enter and the office will still be here where the admin suite is today. We are creating space for a community learning center similar to what we have at this campus. So I think just over 1,000 square feet right at the front door will actually be creating its own exterior entry point so guests can enter that facility and not have to get into the school building. To the left of that, these pink spaces are special ed, three special ed spaces, and their supplemental spaces. The purple is, represents 12 pre-kindergarten classrooms, okay? And you might note, so there's a courtyard here and the library is here. And we are, we're basically taking over that library and putting two classrooms into that library. But what that allows us to do is you can see these kind of lighter colored blocks. Those are what we call family rooms. And Mr. Smith wanted us to really take those four themes that we use to generate these, you know, North and South Campus, and begin to apply them at an age-appropriate level to this building. So think of those family rooms as that kind of show and tell place, that place to be together and collaborate, that place to kind of go out of the classroom and do something. So we've got three family rooms occurring for the preschool. And so what we're doing is we're essentially displacing an existing classroom to do that. But we will have 12 preschool classrooms. And then the darker blue are 13 kindergarten classrooms, okay? So we've got 10 here in the, in this wing with two family rooms. And then where the locker rooms are today, we are, fortunately, none of that or very little of that was load-bearing structure, so we're able to wipe out all of that and create three very nice classrooms. We'll be adding windows there, and they're going to have their own little family room as well, okay? So even though they're kind of a little separated, they'll be together with peers as well. Let's see, we have an art room, a music room. The intent right now is to create a dais here at the stage for board meetings. And those board meetings could either face the cafeteria for smaller events similar to this or if there was a larger event, the dais could be reversed and face the gym. Down here in what is the new wing is the central office. We have, let's see, I think it's 7,500 square feet of new central office space. I think one of the most exciting things that's happening here is we're taking three of those classrooms and converting them into a conference center with operable partitions so that they can be opened up to be, you know, a really large space or they can be subdivided to be three smaller spaces for a great place for PD to happen, you know, especially during the school year when you've got kids in the building, okay?
The advantage is the board will not be confused about where the meeting is, where some people are at the North Campus and some people are at the South Campus waiting for us to get started. So it'll be the same place every time.
And for the community, too.
Absolutely, yes.
Now, one question I don't know if you answered or told us about the dining. Is that going to be in the family spaces or where's the dining happening? The cafeteria, eating?
So the, well, the short answer is, I don't know. You have the option to do it.
I was thinking about food.
So it's really, it's really an operational decision. You know, do you want to eat, the family spaces are really too small to support dining like we see here, like distributed dining. We could, we could make dining happen in there, but then they wouldn't support anything else really well. So I think, based on my understanding and in conversations with the district, dining might happen in the classrooms themselves, could happen in the cafeteria. I think that's really just kind of a question for Principal Stiles to figure.
Point to the cafeteria again up here.
Sure. Cafeteria is over here.
Oh, okay, it's, okay, where it always was.
Yeah, yeah, that's correct. Okay. And just to kind of drill in a little closer, this is a view of the kindergarten, the bulk of the kindergarten classrooms. But you can see how this family room is supplemented with a couple of resource spaces. So you can, you know, you can spill out, you know, if you have, if you need to service a group of students or if maybe there's a specialist who needs to see a group of students, they can pull them out of the classrooms and meet their needs in this collaborative space, okay? We're working on ways to add a little color to the building to help wayfinding so that the littles know that, yeah, I'm in the right place or no, this doesn't look normal to me. So that we're searching for outways to kind of break down the scale of this building as well, okay? And that is all I have for you tonight. Any other questions or anything else I can speak to?
Thank you.
All right, very good. I appreciate your time tonight. Thank you all.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Parker, for coming and sharing that information. That was really good information. And will we be able to, I'm asking, I guess in the air, have these out on our website? You know, like on the presentation, you know, just like, so that, you know how when we were doing the updates for the facility, for the other ones, they were always on the Witten Woods website at the bottom, building construction updates?
Even though this, that building is really for the littles, as we call them, I'm going to ask that Mr. Parker come to convocation and just do a quick overview so that everybody can see that we're trying to change the structure of the environment for it. Because, you got to be Ms. Stiles, she's kind of battling, you've got all this newness around her and I'm here, and we just got to make her know that some hope is coming.
Right, 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 yeah.
Yeah, and we also had two community meetings, one at North Campus, one at South Campus, where we presented these very same images.
So he's presented, this is the fourth time. So to administrators, North and South, and tonight. And he's going to do one more with the convocation.
Very good. That's August the 10th for us board members who are interested in attending.
Yeah, you got, you have a little calendar in there, too.
Oh, I do, in the little folder that you give us.
Yeah.
Thanks.
I had a sub, I had a subservice, you know, Ms. Jordan is on vacation, and, you know, I've been tearing up all day, but she'll be back soon. And so I had a subservice with Ms. Wilson, and I'll have to do like Maury Povich. You are not Ms. Jordan. But you're okay.
Well, thank you, Mr. Parker, for coming and sharing that information. We're always excited to hear about what's going on in the district and how we're progressing. And I think that you're right, as we move out of the pandemic way of thinking, we may begin to utilize the distributive dining area a little bit different and the learning stairs. And I think that going outside to learn is new, you know? So as they, you know, kind of get out of their own heads and move forward, then I think it'll, it'll be good. Yeah, and I think the more you do it, the easier it'll become, you know? Like the first person that's, oh, you went out there and it was good, you know, you did this and it was good. And then, so more people will start using it, so, you know? So I'm looking forward to that, too. So we look forward to hearing this presentation again in August, the convocation. All right, thank you very much. Okay, so anything else, Mr. Smith, on that?
No, ma'am, that was good.
Okay, thank you again. The next item on our agenda is 4.01, which is the Witten Woods Teachers Association. We do not have a representative here tonight. So I'm going to move on to the next item, which is 4.02, which is the Ohio Association of Public School Employees. And we don't have a representative for them either. So we're going to move on to Agenda Item 5.01, which is the approval of minutes as presented. And there are two sets of minutes here, one for 6:27, our regular board meeting, and 7:11, another work session, board meeting, regular work session, board meeting. So we're going to split them or we're going to vote. A motion would be in order, and then we need to vote. I need to abstain from one because I wasn't there.
Actually, we have two people that need to abstain from the work session. So do we need to move it to the next regular meeting?
Mrs. Kuhn for... 6:27 and for 7:11, Mr. Birdie and Dr. Johnson.
Okay, all right, so this is what we're going to do. Let's, we need a, we need a motion to approve the minutes, and then we're going to split them, the 6:27 minutes and then the 7:11 minutes. So let's get the motion on the floor and then we'll split it, split it.
I'll make a motion to request that each of the board's past two meetings be voted on separately, the minutes. So the July 20, let's see, June 27th and then the July 11th meeting, which be voted separately.
I'll second.
Okay, so let's vote on the 6:27 meeting. Mr. Seymour, would you call that vote?
Mrs. Kuhn?
I'll abstain.
Mr. Birdie?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes three with one abstention. The next meeting is for 7:11. Would you call that vote?
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mr. Birdie?
Abstain.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
I'll abstain as well. So that vote is, we need one more.
You're going to have to postpone the approval.
Okay, that's what I was going to say.
Do you have a quorum for that?
We will postpone the voting of the minutes for 7:11 until the next regular board meeting.
What can we do in our work session or does it have to be in a...
Well, that's considered a regular meeting.
I'll just put them back on the next agenda.
Yes, on the next agenda. Thank you very much. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is 6.01, which is the financial statements for June 2022. Mr. Seymour, you have the floor.
Yes, for the month ending of June and also for the year of fiscal year of 2022, the general fund had total revenues of 50.5 million and expenditures of 50.9 million. How, the budget did year, end of the year with a $3.3 million savings. However, the expenditures exceeded our revenues by approximately $400,000. And as I've pointed out to the board in the past, this is one of the first signs that we need an operating levy in order to maintain operations of the district as we start to spend into our cash reserves. The district had approximately 30 million in all funds, and they're listed on Page Five of the report for you to review. And that's basically a summary of the month of June for 2022.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. With no objections being heard, we'll let the financial statements for the month of June 2022 be submitted for audit. The next item on the agenda is 7.01, which is the investments for June 2022. Mr. Seymour, you have the floor.
Yes, the investments for June of 2022 resulted in $22,050, of which 16,540 was for the general fund and the building fund, $5,503.
Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Board, unless you have any questions, let's put a motion on the floor.
I think they make a motion to approve the investment report as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for Mr. Seymour on the investments for June 2022? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mr. Birdie?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 7.02, which is the resolution determining to proceed with the submission of an additional levy tax. Mr. Seymour, you have the floor.
Yes, at your last regular meeting, well, our last meeting, last month, we passed a resolution of necessity to levy a tax in excess of the 10 mils. This is to proceed with that submission of that levy after we received the certification by the Hamilton County Auditor. And as you can see, I loaded that up for you, and the Hamilton County Auditor has his certification there. And since the levy is a five-year, $3 million levy, the auditor certified it would take 5.4 mils to generate $3 million per year. Also, the cost to the homeowner is also listed for you. And again, that cost to the homeowner of a $100,000 house is $189 or $15.75 per month. Typically, most people list the cost of a $100,000 home, and that way people can adjust towards the appraised value of their home to get their estimated increase. Always remember, it's on the auditor's appraised value, not necessarily your current market value.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Seymour. Board, a motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution determining to proceed with the submission of an additional tax levy as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been motioned. And second, and are there any questions at this time for Mr. Seymour?
Not a question, but thank you for clarifying about how it's listed that it isn't just your, what you can sell your house for the market value but what's on the Hamilton County Auditor site.
Yes.
So thank you for that clarification for the public.
Okay, with no other questions or comments, Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Mrs. Kuhn?
Aye.
Mr. Birdie?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 8.0, well, we've already done 8.01, but it's 8.02 is the facilities update. Is that one taken care of, too, or do you have some other things?
No, I do have some additional updates.
Okay, Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
For your convenience, you have a document in your binder, in your folder that lists all the school things that we'd like for you to participate in. It's done in landscape, so you'll see it's a little different than the regular portrait that you see in there. And it lists the dates of the parent luncheon, convocation, the opening day, open house for the North Campus. And so we hope that the board members can attend because the public would love to see you there. The other thing is Mr. Brandon Smith mentioned, some people don't know the board. I mean, they know you, but they don't know you, and they don't know, they've not heard your words about what you believe in as far as education is concerned. So we're going to give you the luxury of having a few words at convocation to come up and just kind of give an overview of who you are, what you think, and why you think like you do. All right, so, all right. Not a 20-minute speech, it's quick.
Three minutes.
You don't need a PowerPoint, you don't need a presentation. No, no, you don't need, you don't need Ms. Hobbs either, you don't need any of that at all. So don't come with a projector and all, no, you don't, just a few words. Just a few words.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, all right. So a member of my executive team asked me when I made the decision to have the board come up there, like, are you sure? And I am sure, I am sure, so we're going to go on. This next one is the facilities update. And much to my disappointment, the bladder tank did not work. It was installed, it's still failing, and so we are still going to try to work through it. Demolition operations continue at the former Primary South and Elementary Sites. The HVAC envelope improvements for the Early Childhood Center Campus is right on target for August, and it's done by a Mark Spalding Construction mobilizing. I think that was discussed at the work session. Public auction for properties the board has deemed to be surplus will take place Thursday, August 25th at noon at 8:25 Waycross. Public notice for this auction will be on Monday, July 25th. So today was the first day that it... So today was the first day that it went into the newspaper for public auction. So look for that. Properties available for sale at this time would be Wenton Woods Elementary School, 1501 Kingsbury Drive, Forest Park Elementary School, 924 Hellsworth Drive, and Kemper Heights Elementary School. Now, I'm listed, I've, I said schools, but in some of those cases, there are no schools. It's just property, which, when people go and see, they would feel a lot better about it. And the Charlie Frederick Stadium at North Campus, water pressure improvements continue. A high-capacity bladder tank was installed in the multipurpose building on July 19th, and work goes on to continue. All right. One of the things that's going to probably have to happen with the board, we're probably going to have to go into executive session to talk about this company and what we need to do. We keep bringing them out, nothing's happening, and we may need to get a little more aggressive.
In regards to the water situation?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what does that mean in terms of the upcoming year of usage for this?
Well, we still have the, the portables that you don't like and I don't like, and we still have the walkway straight to the North Campus, but the, the water pressure does work. It just doesn't work when you flush multiple toilets.
But the concession stand works, okay.
We've actually modified it so the concession stand could stay on and operational at the same time so that the sanitation piece is taken care of. We were able to at least to get that part done.
And in the locker rooms for the teams, are they having any issues there?
They are, they will have some issues, but hopefully, Ms. Coon, by the time August 19th rolls around, we will be closer to the problem, unfortunately. Yeah, closer to solving the problem. I did not admit it like that, but you understand. And that's it for the facilities update. And again, I think Mr. Parker bringing that information in the surveys and what we're doing, I think that's just exactly what the public needs. Where are we? And if you notice, the public did not have a lot of questions and concerns or issues about the buildings because we were updating them every single month.
Well, that's one of the reasons why I ask if it could be on the website, because that's where they were always directing us, even after they had given us a presentation.
We will get it on there.
Go to the website, and in every month, it was always up to date. And so I think it does relieve people to know that their mon, I, it relieves me, I will speak for myself, to know that the money is being spent and, you know, and people are being accountable for how it's being spent. And you can see the work, you know, that the money is being spent on. So I think it makes me feel better to know that. And, and I appreciate the update about the bathrooms. That really kind of has gone a little too long. And I agree with you that we might need to get a little more aggressive.
Absolutely.
With the, I mean, we've given them, it's been a ye, over a year now, you know, two years.
One and a half.
Okay, that's not good.
Yeah.
That really is not good.
And the, and the, the thing about it, Dr. Johnson, the issue of, it used to power a whole high school, and now it's struggling to take care of, you know, an athletic complex.
Right.
So...
Well, and it's such a beautiful complex, and to say that we don't have, you know, the facilities that we need is not, that's just not good.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we will, you know, we will look for more updates on that because that is top of our...
Yeah, you'll have an update at the work session where I'm going to meet with Mr. Denny and meet with the company to say, guys, we, we, we have to do something a little bit different.
And if they can't do it, then next?
We become a little more...
Yeah, a little more aggressive.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. All right, very good. That's all informational, it's good information. We love to hear. The next item on the agenda, Mr. Smith, is back to you for personnel schedules.
Ms. Wilson?
Good evening. Before you, you have Schedule A, resignations. Schedule B, certificated staffs. Schedule C, support staff. Schedule D, supplementals, and Schedule E, employee leaves. So if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them for you.
Um, yes, let's get the motion on the floor first, and then you can ask, we can ask you questions, is that okay?
Sure.
All right, board, a motion is in order, please.
I motion to approve the personnel schedules as presented.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded. Now, if we have any questions, we could address them to Mrs. Wilson or Mr. Smith. We, I will, I will just make an observation. I, I always look and see what other school districts are doing with, or what they look like for resignations. And the number is just incredibly high, a, a, across the board. I mean, one school district, what was that district that you and I talked about, Deborah, 45?
Yeah.
I mean, and, and I, when I got that, I got really interested. So I went and started researching other districts to see what, who had numbers out there. So while this might look somewhat alarming to have this many resignations, we're still way...
105 Cincinnati Public last week.
I, I know it was approaching 100, I didn't know. When I checked, it was like at 80.
Yeah, they're there, yeah.
Wow. And that's administrators too, that wasn't just teachers. That was, I mean, I just did my own homework to look at that. So I just wanted to make an observation because usually when we have, you know, a sheet of resignations, people become alarmed and say, oh, you know, so many resignations, good people are leaving. But good people are leaving everywhere. I don't know what the mass exodus is all about, but I mean... Teacher frustration with the pandemic and with coming back and how things have to be, I guess.
Yeah, some people are leaving the profession, Doc. There are some people that are saying, based on the gas prices, I want to go, because many of our teachers passed three school districts to get here.
Yeah.
And we know that. And then you have the other thing where it's competitive salary. You know, you could be on step, you know, you can get a 6%. And they have to take care of their families because I, as I was explaining to Ms. Coon before the meeting, a lot of people have still lost income in the household. There were two people working, now there are one. And they're saying, okay, I'm making this salary. I can go here and get a 6%. I, I have to do what I have to do. There have been people that have, that have left the district in tears saying, you know, if this ever gets back in shape, can we come back? Because we like PBL and we like the kids. I mean, but they do have to take care of their families, and we respect that.
And one of my concerns was that mass exodus, reading all the different articles, not just here, but across the country. So I think that's a really important fine line that the board has to balance with being able to be cognizant of, of the monies that we need for our district and asking our community for money. But the reason we're asking is because we have to ma, we have to provide facilities and teachers and staff and administrators to be able to hold, be held accountable to do the work that we need to do. That's really important. So that, that's, that was one of my concerns, that it would be hard to replace people if people were to leave and what your pool of applicants may be. I know bus drivers already are a problem, a separate problem.
And we could have a, we could have a, a large group of brand-new teachers, and of course, their salary is lower, but there's a consequence for that.
Oh, absolutely.
That level of experience is just not there.
Absolutely.
And the other thing I have to say is, based on the way we hire people and the professional development that we, we provide for them, people love our teachers, other people.
Well, and another observation that I think is worth noting, if we do look at the personnel schedules for the teachers that have come to us, they are very well, they, they have a nice background.
Yes.
They have a very good background in, in education. So I think that, that says a lot for what we're, what we're bringing into the district, bringing in people that have the years of experience, the degree, a master's degree, you know, and, or credits toward it or whatever. So that means you're getting a teacher that is, you know, more vetted for the, the classroom. So I think that that's good, and I, I want to commend you on, you know, that search, that talent search, making sure that we find the highly qualified, I know they don't call them that anymore, but the highly qualified teachers.
Yeah, I have a question. Mr. Birdie, I know that you, you know, work with the Oaks. What's, what's their movement like as far as staff? Much, a little?
Well, unfortunately, I was out of the country at the last Oaks meeting, so I wasn't there to see the human resource recommendations. So I'm not sure what they've run into in the last month.
Because they need very special, specialized people.
Yeah, I, I know, and I mean, I'm sure they do the same thing you all do. They have a staffing matrix that they go through and identify the positions that are, that are critical to what they need to hire and then focus on, focus on those. But, you know, it, I, I, this isn't unique to Wenton Woods. This is going on all over the place.
So there's some new legislature in the state, and I don't know if you can speak on it, Ms. Wilson, where they're saying that you really don't need a college education to be that teacher. Yeah, we're a little nervous about that. I mean, I don't know.
Well, it's consistent with what we've had to do to cover some of the absences using our paraproses. So from time to time. So now, this essentially allows people that work well with children to be able to, you know, legally substitute if a teacher's not present. So I see it as a positive in terms of filling some of these gaps.
Well, I think as a substitute, that is a temporary type of, I just, I, it's just, as a, but, you know, as a permanent solution, it does make me cringe a little bit. And that's why I wanted to make note that, because I had read a similar article, maybe the same article, and I'm like, you know, no disrespect to anybody, but, you know, we want to, we want to take care of our children with the best way possible. You know, I, I know every parent, when they go to put their child in or grandparent in kindergarten, or they don't just throw them in the first thing, the first open door that they see. They go in, they look, they see, you know, they want to make sure that they have a good, you know, facility, you know, and, and the quality of, of the teachers. So I think that that is a temporary fix, like if somebody's out and you need somebody to sit in, you know, because the, the lesson plan should already be there, you know, but as a permanent solution, just...
Yeah, but in some cases, Doc, the, the one thing that I know that Ms. Wilson's brought to my attention, because of the pair being familiar with the classroom, sometimes that pair is better than bringing in a person who knows nothing about PBL. So it does have some advantages for a long-term situation.
I do agree with that.
Yeah.
But I think that you are, you all are doing a great job with, you know, fielding and, and doing your best to field with. Because if you look, you know, board, if you look, and even our audience, if you look at the qualifications for these teachers that you have hired, I mean, can't argue with qualifications, you know, you just can't.
So if you ever see a car at the, the renovated, the renovated building that we're working on, it's a car there by itself, she's probably hiring teachers at 11 o'clock at night.
I know she does work some crazy hours.
I mean, there have been times where she's called me and says, hey, there's this person, we can, and I'm saying, ah, do, do what we need to do for kids. And so that's always been at the, at, at our forefront. So we appreciate it.
That's very good. Thank you. Are there any other questions or discussion at this time on the personnel schedules? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Mrs. Coon?
Aye.
Mr. Birdie?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is 9.02, is administrative salaries effective August the 1st, 2022? Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President, I know that there was a conversation with Ms. Coon, and she actually had some very legitimate pieces to it about levies and salaries and those things. But one of the things that I would caution the board about as it relates to the percentage that we're talking about, if we are not careful, teachers will make more than administrators. And that will create a, a storm that we've never faced. But some other districts have felt, faced it, and they have to deal with that because you'll use, lose administrators in the system. They all have their responsibilities in their, their work, but I think that, at this point, the recommendations to approve the administrative salaries effective August 1st, 2022 as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Board, a motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the administrative salaries effective August 1st, 2022 as presented.
I approve the motion.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up, Mr. Smith, because there's a huge, I think all the board, I don't want to speak for everybody, but I think, I do think the board is very cognizant of our community. And when we go to ask them for funds for operating, and, and as I brought up, the importance of being able to staff our, our district with very well-qualified people, that's a real important thing, and be able to keep people.
You're correct.
So for us, we have to balance, this is my struggle. I got to balance the cost of doing business, which we have to deal along with, the, kind of the restr, or the, the yoke, I feel, from our community to be responsible stewards of the community dollars. So those are things that we want to ask, those tough questions, so the community knows that we ask it, that we look. We're, we're very aware of the fact that, as Mr. Seymour brought up, that we're digging into our resources. So that's all the more reason why the community, you know, they, it's probably, not an oxymoron, but a contradiction sometimes, like, why are you spending more money? You're asking for more money. But we haven't had any operating increases for over 12 years from our community.
And I, and I think the most important part that you just mentioned, sometimes based on the work that's already happened, the pre-work that's happened with the board, superintendent and treasurer, we're in the work session and we work those things through. But I think it's important for the public to know that there are some, some struggles. And there are some conversations that go along with when you're talking about increasing, it's not just an automatic, here it is. So we appreciate the struggle and the conversation because I think that people that are watching at home need to know that it's not just an automatic. It has to be something about being good stewards of this money.
They are, and it's, and it's very troublesome to me personally to have to want to make cuts to what could hurt our students. So I just want to be aware that...
Yeah.
Every piece we touch, we want to be good stewards of what we're spending, why we're spending it. People can understand what, they might always agree with it, but there is some...
Logic.
...understanding about what we're doing and why we do it.
Totally agree.
That's, that's, that's the point I kind of wanted to bring out to the community. And it made me feel a little bit better about coming to conclusions.
And I think it's important too, just like we were just talking about, having the qualified teachers. Then we want the administrators to have those same credentials and to be credential holders, and, and they do. So I think that, you know, if you want the best, you've got to pay for the best. So, all right, well, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments at this time? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Aye.
Mr. Birdie?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye. That vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 9.03, which is the Wenton Woods Teachers Association contract contract for 7/1/22 to 6/30/2023. Mr. Smith, you have the floor. Or Mrs. Wilson.
Yes, before you, you have a draft of the new contract with the Teachers Association. The bargaining committee was comprised of Tanya Bray from the Student Services Director, Adrian Martin, who is a former principal, and also Curriculum Director, Randy Seymour for the financial piece, and then myself as the HR Director slash Legal Representative for the district. And we worked with the team of teachers and reached this agreement, which the highlight of it is, it's an across-the-board 2% increase for our teachers, just to recognize their continued contributions to our students and to keep our salaries competitive with surrounding districts.
So, one other piece, we were, in the contract, we were very successful with putting another initiative into place where we realized that we want to treat our people like professionals, and sometimes professionals can work from home, and you don't always have to come in. So the Records Day is now adopted as part of the contract, which means that the teachers on Records Day can work remotely. They don't have to come in, because we tested it, you gave me the latitude to say, can we run it as a pilot? We did it, and they have all done it very, very successfully without any issues whatsoever. So I'm happy to say that one of the things that we used as a pilot turned out to be very beneficial, and it increases morale, where the teachers say, I can do this from home, and I have all the technology right here that's been afforded by the board, so it works out. So that was one of my goals, Dr. Johnson, to, you know, make this a reality and not just a pilot, so it's come to terms.
Can you tell us a little bit what Records Day would mean for a teacher, what they do?
Well, can we get the motion on the floor? Then we can ask a question.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's a good one. Yeah, I'd get ahead of myself.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the Witten Woods Teachers Association contract for 7/1/22 through 6/30 of 23, as presented.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, so, no, that was Mrs. Coon.
Ms. Paul.
Yes.
Yes, okay, so it's been motioned and seconded. Now, Mrs. Coon, you've got some questions.
No, I forgot.
Oh, no! It was about Records Day?
Yeah, what would Records Day mean?
So they're working in the informational management system, ECHO, and all their grades are compiled in ECHO, and they go in and they sort, and they drop grades in, and they make sure that GPAs are right and all the averages are right, kids receive the right grades for the right projects and everything like that, and sometimes teachers will come in and do it anyway. But for the most part, they're saying, is it possible for this, to do this remotely because we have the technology? And that level of convenience actually has helped some teachers stay at Witten Woods, because you gave them, you gave them something else to say, we trust you with the work. All right, so...
No, that's, I just wanted kind of our viewers to know what we were, what that meant, too, and how important that was.
And I actually have a person who's watching and monitoring that work, and I'm telling you, she doesn't let you get by, and that would be right there.
She's in the room.
She's like, the bucket is open.
She's probably checking in right now.
She's like, there are three teachers that didn't, and so, but when you have some good eyes on it, we, you know, at the end of the day, just like the teachers want to know, do you trust me with this work?
Yeah.
And we talk about trust, respect, and responsibility, now we show it.
True.
So, there we go.
Well, and I will say that I do appreciate that there is sort of like a failsafe or a backup way to check that, because, you know, we know we've had some difficulty in the past with records, you know, so we have someone very well-qualified to check, to make sure that things are being updated in their proper way. So we appreciate that, Mrs. Hobbs, truly we do.
So just as a friendly reminder, we just say, Ms. Hobbs is watching you, and so that just kind of increases it.
Yeah, Ms. Hobbs is kind of like Big Brother, so we appreciate that, so, thank you very much. All right, are there any other questions or comments at this time regarding the contract? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mrs. Coon?
Aye.
Mr. Birdie?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye, that vote passes unanimously. Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. The next item on the agenda, and she's standing still because she knows I'm going to give that one to, is the 9.04, which is the Ohio Association of Public School Employees Contract for 7/1/2022 to 6/30/2023. So, Mrs. Wilson and Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Okay, and before you, you have a summary of the changes to the OPEC contract. We recently settled with them after mediation with a federal mediator, and I'm happy to say that we got a little hung up on transportation, and that's no secret to the board, I don't think, but we were able to work through our issues with some contract language changes that we think will help improve the system and on both sides. And so we all walked away feeling, you know, like this was a step in the right direction. But overall, our classified staff also is very deserving of, in our opinion, an across-the-board increase of 2%, which is modest. We're still, you know, our salaries are not, we did a salary comparison, we're sort of at the bottom of the middle, so we're not entirely competitive, but it's something so that we don't fall to the bottom. So we're asking that the board approve the changes as presented.
Would you like a motion, Mrs. Coon?
Yes, yes, please, a motion is in order, board.
I would like to make a motion to approve the Ohio Association of Public School Employees OPEC, the contract for 7/1/2022 through 6/30 of 23, as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion?
You were saying, was it just OPEC that you were saying that we were lower than maybe comparable in this particular area?
Across the board, our salaries are, tend to be in the middle, the bottom of the middle.
For OPEC-type, for those contract numbers?
Yes. And so we've tried to remain competitive, and Randy could probably speak to it, but we're not the worst district, we're not the best, and so what we do is, we have some flexibility with our steps that we're allowed to avoid. The superintendent has some discretion for hard-to-fill positions, so last summer, we piloted a salary match program that helped us recruit 10 bus drivers last summer. So we've got some strategies that we've tried, we've tried different things to remain competitive, but in general, yes, we're at the bottom of the middle, if you do a salary comparison of surrounding districts.
So one question I do have, because our problem last year was busing and having enough drivers, how are we looking for that? Are we, how are we doing?
So, Mr. Denny asked me to find six full-time drivers and two substitute drivers, and so we are, I think with tonight's approval, we should be at five drivers, and then we need to find three more. And we've got a recruiting event happening on August 20th at the Black Family Reunion. We had some success there last year. The catch with it is that if we find people that are interested and want to work, it does take a little bit of time to obtain the bus driver CDL.
But I'll be able to give you some updates of what we've done with stops that will kind of ease some of the tension of where we go. Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's good to know, because that, I think, was a sore spot, obviously, last year at the beginning of the school year, and then bus schedules go out.
We really don't want to have that kerfuffle again.
Yeah, yeah. With our little ones, too.
We don't.
It was, it was, it was losing a limb, it wasn't a sore spot.
Yeah, it really wasn't a kerfuffle. I really did feel like all of us gave a limb for them.
Our transportation team has been working very hard to make improvements, and OPEC has been very cooperative. Shonda Ferguson-Gordon has been instrumental in leading that charge, and so we're hopeful that this year will be a little bit better, or a lot better.
And bus schedules go out a little bit earlier, that way that the parents will know, and they won't bring their kids, yeah.
Okay.
That was important, not that that's related to this question, but...
It is related.
Well, it is, and also the same, the same, we were, we had some issues with food service workers, too. So are we okay with, that we still are...
We had a few recently leave, so that's going to be, that's our next challenge. But Mark, Dr., I talked to him today, and he has a proposal that we'll probably bring to you next, at the next board meeting.
Is there an opportunity to recruit at the BFR for that event?
Well, that's what I was going to, I mean, I don't know whether we, just we're doing for bus drivers, but could we do it for those service workers as well?
Absolutely. Yes, we will recruit any, any and all people that are able to fill some of our gaps.
So are you, is our district going to have a table down at the Black Family Reunion?
Yes, we did, we did it last year, and we're going to do it again this year. So in addition to the parade, which is more so for the kids, right, and the community...
More so for us.
Oh, and, so the community, yeah. The table that we have is specifically for recruiting, so it will be down there with employment applications and information about the district, including our salary schedules, copies of our contract to entice people to try us out.
Okay. Is it possible to have some of that, is the flyer for the recruiting event available online, so if people are interested or want to know more, they can check the website?
Right, yeah, advertised on our website.
Yes, I think it's out there already, I believe, and if it isn't, it will be short.
Or will it pop up as one of the windows that, kind of, the slides that go through?
For certain positions, we never took it down.
Okay.
So like, I think all year, we've been looking for bus drivers, we've been looking for special ed teachers, ESL teachers, and now food service as well.
Okay.
So, thank you. Very good, thank you very much. If there are no more questions or discussion, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mrs. Coon?
Aye.
Mr. Birdie?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye, that vote passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is 9.05, which is bus stops for 2022, 2023 school year. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President and Board, so this routing has been exported right from Versitrans, which is our electronic bus routing system. It's been sorted in alphabetical order, and the list shows bus stops in the district across all five route tiers, the middle school, the Academy of Global Studies, JVS, high schools, south campus, grades 1 to 3, south campus 4 to 6, early childhood. But one of the things that you'll notice, if you go back, if you would go back and look at bus stops from last year, the stops are, have been reduced, and we have more kids having to get to a particular place than having these bus routes so spread out, because it was very difficult to do. But there's also, there's a revised code, no student may be permitted to walk more than one-half mile to reach their assigned stop, so it doesn't violate them. It just means that you have to get to a particular place, and instead of picking up one or two from a stop, we're picking up 10 and 15.
Okay.
Okay. The district's walking boundary remains unchanged at one mile or less from school, the district's transportation boundary remains unchanged at more than one mile from school, and for safety reasons, the district will continue to provide transport students in grades PK to 6, who will be required to cross high traffic surface streets such as Witten Roads, Kemper Roads, Mill Road, Sharon Road during their walk to school. So our safety factors are put in place, and so it's actually meeting the safety factors along with the one mile, or the half, the one mile, one-half mile, excuse me, reached to their assigned bus stops. So we're going to be more efficient, the bus cars are going to go out weeks before, not after we've already started school, and Ms. Coon made a good point, in some cases, the parents just didn't trust it anymore. You missed, we missed the bus the first three days, and so now I'm a car driver. And what the cars did is just kind of load it up on Faragut and everywhere, because parents are trying to get their kids to school, can't blame them for that. So we had to be better, we really didn't recover from that, and I think that hurt our levy opportunities as well. So now we're being very, very focused, we have been focused on these bus routes actually since October of last, October of 2022. So our goal is to be very efficient as it relates to the buses.
Okay, good.
So the recommendations to approve the bus stops for the 2022, 23 school year.
Okay, board, a motion would be in order.
I make a motion to approve the bus stops for the 2022, 2023 school year, as presented.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions at this time for Mr. Smith? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call the vote?
Mrs. Coon?
Aye.
Mr. Birdie?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye, that vote passes unanimously.
In addition to that, Dr. Johnson and Board, we will, we have six new vans, and we have people that are certified, so we'll have those vans out circulating around the first few weeks of school, just to make sure that we can get all the kids to school safely and on time.
Thank you.
We didn't have that last time, we didn't have that luxury.
Six new vans with certified people, like with their CDL, whatever they need to drive. Very good.
Yes.
And then if it's a bus that their students usually used to using, and a van comes up, I mean, they'll know that they can get in that van.
Well, they'll know, because it has a big Witten Woods thing on the side, and they'll know that, hey, listen, here's the deal, we're going to let you get in the van, and then we'll actually have the administrator make contact to the parents, your child rode the van today, and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. There'll be some follow-up to go along with it. Kid's not going to just get that van service every day, you know, it's like, hey, here's a van, come to my house every morning.
All right, well, that's good, that's good. All right, the next item on the agenda is 9.06, which is the second read of revised board policies. Mr. Smith, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam President and Board, first policy is 5511, students' dress and grooming, 5772, weapons, 6110, grant funds, 6114, cost principal spending, federal funds, 6325, procurement, federal grants, funds, 6423, use of credit cards, 7217, property weapons, and 8500, food services. I'd like to just say something quickly about 7217. When they talk about weapons, you'll notice in your packet, it includes ammunition, like ammo is part of that process, and you can have, you have to follow that Ohio Revised Code, because the state is saying, if you have ammo, something is somewhere. And so they're just kind of putting those pieces together just to make districts safe, and we are adopting that same process as well.
Okay.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Smith, board, a motion would be in order.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the second read of the board policies as presented, the revised board policies.
I'll second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Are there any questions for discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Seymour, would you please call that vote?
Mrs. Coon?
Aye.
Mr. Birdie?
Aye.
Ms. Bryant?
Aye.
Dr. Johnson?
Aye, that vote passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Smith, for your updates. The next item on the agenda is 10.01, which is the legislative report. Mrs. Coon, I see that you've given us some things, but would you like to highlight anything specific?
Well, this is a slow month from a legislative aspect in Ohio, they're on summer recess, but there were some leftovers from late June that I thought were important, and you can kind of look through there. The one I thought was interesting, on the congressional, the federal congressional level, President Biden signed the Bipartisan Safer Communities Act, which is rather inclusive. I sent, I attached the pieces that define what it does. I think, I mean, I don't know how much money filters into each state and into each community, it starts with the big dollar amounts, and I'm sure, I think this legislation, I think, was based on some of the actions needed because of the Yovaldi shooting, school shooting, and I think people want, they need the government to recognize the importance to do something, or they recognize this as an issue. So this was a bipartisan effort, and from a federal level, so just, just so you're aware of it, and again, I don't know how to filter down, you know, Mr. Smith and Mr. Seymour may know more about how the funding finds its way to us, I'm hoping it can help.
It actually takes 18, two years for it filters down through the system, through the federal, to the state.
To the local educational agencies.
Okay.
I also read something, is this part of, and this is a question, not a statement, is this part of the, also the Mental Health Act that they were trying to do for children so they get so many days off, about the mental health thing?
Oh, the three, the mental health?
That's a state one, that's, yeah, I think Jessica Miranda was, had something to do with that.
Oh, I don't know, I just read about it somewhere.
I read that, I couldn't find anything on that, and I can bring some more information, but there was, I think, a separate piece.
But this isn't part of that, that's something different. This is federal, that was state.
Yeah, it does talk about mental health and how, you know, the importance of addressing mental health issues for children.
One of the, one of the pieces, the superintendent in Texas where there was the latest tragedy, he recommended that they close the school. And closing the school, because he did not believe that he can open the school with any fidelity where it would just be too emotional, the problem with it, those emotional kids are going to go somewhere. And so I don't know which is best, to offer services and open it, or to let them spread out all over that region, so, because they're still going to be affected. There's going to be some parents that are going to say, I am going to homeschool my kid for the rest. And you'll have some parents' kids who are very apprehensive about going to school because it was their classmate, it's the kid they sit next to. So the psychological parts of it, they're okay right now for the summer, kind of, but that kind of resurfaces all over again. I saw this myself. And again, I think the superintendent is being very responsible by saying, closing, but you still have the children, and what do you do with them for many, many years to come?
Because those scars are deeper than just not coming to that building.
You're absolutely right, Doc, because that's the kid I'm supposed to grow up with, right? We were on the softball team, or the swim team, whatever the case may be.
And there's some post-traumatic stress that goes with the child, even going back into a building, period.
Period.
You know, so that is bigger, so they do need to have, something needs to happen with that, but I appreciate this update, because that is something. And I will say that we have within our district some very good counselors...
Oh, absolutely.
...that, you know, work with our, with our kids, so hats off to them, their job is not easy, you know? I don't know what a school counselor did when I was in school, because, you know, they weren't like the qualified people that we have today, you know what I'm saying?
You might have talked to one in high school.
Yeah, well, yeah, to talk about college or something, but it wasn't like what we are dealing with today. So I just really do appreciate, again, Mrs. Wilson and her team and Mr. Smith for recruiting those counselors that are mental health counselors, that already had that background, you know, coming forward to work with our kids, because...
It's more than just a schedule now.
It's, yeah, it's more than just, you know, referring them to apply for a scholarship, that's what I think I see my counselor for in high school, I mean, you know, you need to apply for the scholarship, so.
Listen, thank you so much for this information.
Yes.
For the public, please, if you have not already looked at it, check out the Bipartisan Safer Community Act, there's legislation in here, increased funding for schools... There's legislation in here, increased funding for schools and mental health services, things that we know our children need. Not only did COVID strike fear in all of us across the world, but then you have all of these shootings and tragedies that are occurring, that our children are seeing, hearing, and even if they have not been firsthand, you know, in the midst of the tragedy, they're hearing it. So, we want to make sure that we have safe schools for our students and our, for our employees, and making sure that we're all mentally okay. There's also the information about this suicide, National Suicide Prevention Line 9-8-8. So, please make sure that you have this information, that if you're struggling, or if your children are struggling, that there is help available. We want you all to be here. That's it.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda, thank you, Mrs. Kuhn, for this information. It's really good information, is 10.02, which is the Great Oaks Career Technology Center Report. And Mr. Verdi, you have the floor.
Yeah, and as I mentioned before, I was unable to actually attend the last meeting, because I was going to say I was out of the country, but my wife and I were out of the country, celebrating an anniversary and her birthday. Bravo.
Very good.
So, I, I hope that's a valid reason. I apologize for doing it.
Absolutely.
And we had a great time, except for some of the travel issues. But it all, it all worked. So, I, I did send out the reports. I was able to pull those and send them out to everybody like I normally do. There were no Wynton Woods students in these Students in Spotlight report. We did have one Wynton Woods student that was listed on a scholarship recipients in the class of 2022. I think I've mentioned her before, but Sammy Ali, Health Technology at Wynton Woods. She got the, the Nisha Williams Memorial Scholarship for $1,000. And with that, I'll conclude my report.
Thank you, Mr. Verdi. The next item on the agenda is 11.01, board motions and recommendations. And there aren't any, to my knowledge. So, we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda, which is 12.01, which is comments from the Board of Education. So, we'll start with Mrs. Bryant.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you again for tuning in, and I want to just wish everyone a safe summer, and thank you for all the hard work you do throughout the year, for parents, grandparents, caregivers, community members, and go Warriors.
All right, next, Mrs. Kuhn.
Echo, a sentiment's, going to keep it short and sweet, getting ready for our students to come back to school. It's a never-ending job for our staff and our schools. Also, I think there's no tax, tax-free shopping coming up. It's in August, usually. I don't have the date, I'm so sorry. But I do encourage our parents to look for those no, no tax shopping free days.
Sales tax free.
Tax free.
Sales tax free. Shopping, yeah.
Say as many words as you possibly can. So much for my short and sweet. But thank you very much. Hope everybody's have a great summer, and looking forward to seeing everybody come back next month.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Verdi?
Same thing, teachers, staff, OPSI, all those employees, everybody that, administrators, all involved with the education of our children, students, parents, family members, everybody have a great summer and stay safe. And we look forward to having you back later on. And thank you for Mr. Parker coming and doing the presentation that he did for SHP and, and kind of doing that survey. And I think, as you said, it would be, it'll be good to see survey results that match the questions that were asked before, to see if the perspective is being changed as maybe new teachers understand what the intent was of the spaces and how they were to be used, and see if that generates any different usage of the spaces as well.
Yes.
So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Verdi. Mr. Seymour, do you have any comments?
No, thank you.
All right, okay, Mr. Smith?
I am thrilled that at least all, at least some of my executive team took vacations, because it refreshed them, because we have been putting it on really, really, really hard, you know, for the past couple of years. And some of them didn't even take a vacation last year or the year before. I use Ms. Hobbs as my vacation guide. She came back last week refreshed and happy and smiling. The smile is dwindling a little bit, but she still, she still looks happy. She still looks happy. And I, I think it's always very, very good for people to refresh.
Absolutely.
And that's going to be our theme for our convocation, refreshing our parents to be more committed to our work.
Thank you. Yes, I, I echo those sentiments. I don't think people realize how important it is for educators to get some time off, you know, because it's, it's a very arduous job to deal with all the emotions of all
Every day.
The, the students and the teachers, and emotions can run high toward the end of the year. And as educator myself, I'm always really excited at the beginning of the school year, and I'm really excited at the end of the school year. It's just the way it is. I mean, like, I can't sleep at night before the first day of school, and I've been doing it for over 30 years. I don't know why I'm like this. But anyway, when I stop having that feeling, is when I'm going to retire. But anyway, having said that, echo the sentiments of the thank yous that have gone out. Again, Mr. Parker doing the presentation, I think it is good to have the same questions asked again and again, so that you can do a comparison of, of that. And so, with that said, I'm going to end my comments at that time. I was going to go over some of the dates that Mr. Smith gave us, for the important dates. So, just for the sake of, you know, just repeating them for the camera, the parent meeting, August 3, and new teachers' luncheon, August 8, the convocation, August 10, and the football season opener and the open house. That's something was new that we implemented.
It's been working great.
It's been working great, and it's a good time to, to all come together. That's August 19. And the Black Family Reunion Parade, which is August 20. And also, Mrs. Wilson told us that we're going to have a table there for recruiting some new hires. And the first day clap in, we do like to encourage all of the board members to come to that on August 22. It's basically where we rally and clap the students in. And this time, it's going to be a little easier, because we only have two campuses, as opposed to trying to drive. Before, we had to drive to all the different campuses, and you'd kind of say, I'm going to go to these three, or somebody's going to go to these three. So, it's really nice that we just have the two campuses. So, that's refreshing.
Mayor, Ms., Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
The mayor asked me if I would say something on his behalf, and I told him that I would. He's been trying to create these, this bond with the community. And he noticed that there were some communities, Mount Lookout, Bonne Hill, Sailor Park, they all were in this publication, but there was nothing about Forest Park, and very little about Green Hills. And so, what he wanted to do is just kind of refresh, as he mentioned, that we participate in the Black Family Reunion Parade, not just a Forest Park piece, but as a Wynton Woods community piece, with the band, with the football team, with the girls' basketball team, with the executive team, with the board members, if they choose to do so, because